Welcome, everybody, to our Tuesday, October seventeenth council meeting. We are starting today off with our six o'clock workshop on legislative priorities. Is the time of the year for this? So we're going to go ahead and have Senator Mark McAvoy can lead the discussion. I've been having a lot of discussions on this myself over the last couple of weeks with AWC meetings and GSI meetings and the plethora of alphabet soup. That I attend, so we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Mark.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of tonight's workshop, as the mayor has laid out, is to essentially discuss and provide counsel the opportunity to reach some consensus on some legislative priorities. We're getting ready to go into the 2024 legislative session, which will kick off in January. And the way that the, and you all know this, I'm more doing this to remind myself and anyone who may be watching this, this year that is the even year. And so it's the shorter session. So this is a sixty day session, so starting in early January, ending sometime in March, unless there is a special session called or a series of special sessions called. And so earlier, I believe it was last week, mid to late last week, I sent out a couple of different documents. They were the 2024 legislative agenda for the Association of Washington Cities. And that is a finalized version of their legislative agenda. And I also sent you the working document that they were using to derive that agenda, which has a whole host of other things that didn't quite make it onto their agenda, but that are items that they're going to be watching and supporting. And so that list has some useful information that we may want to look at as we go through this conversation. I also sent you the 2023 legislative agendas for both the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce and Greater Spokane, Inc. And you'll see a lot of commonality in those two agendas. And I will say that both of those organizations right now are working to finalize their 2024 agendas. And part of the opportunity we have and maybe what will come from tonight is an opportunity to contribute to the GSI's formation of their agenda. And those items to be considered are due by the nineteenth of October to GSI, and they're going to vote to finalize their agenda on October the twenty sixth. The Greater Spokane Valley Chamber process is ongoing as well. I don't know that we have as hard and fast of a deadline with the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber, but still that we're working under the same general timeline. And so really what we're wanting to do is, in light of our forthcoming strategic plan, is to kind of dovetail these things so that we are keeping our strategic priorities in mind as we're developing four to five, maybe some more legislative priorities that we want to focus our attention on. And so with that, I'd like to start the conversation by giving counsel the opportunity to provide some insights from your own unique perspectives. If you've had a chance to review these three documents or others that that may be out there. And then bringing your your own insights from your various positions and the the information that you've heard from your respective constituencies to the table for this conversation, so that we can form and build some consensus, hopefully around. I'm saying four to five, it doesn't have to be that, obviously, but that's the target, I think, to have a channelized focus so that we can go into the legislative session with the ability to really hone in on those items and get the legislature to listen to those priorities. And so with that, I am going to turn the floor over and hopefully help facilitate this conversation. So we can, through the next forty-five minutes or so, help to build that consensus. So with that, are there any questions? Does does everyone have the documents that that I sent out? So you've got those, okay. And you've got the strategic priorities that we've been talking about for the last several months. And so the goal is to, in light of those, like I said, to to help build some consensus around four to five priorities that we want to go into the session with.
Mark, can I ask a good?
Absolutely.
Mark, you were talking about trying to influence perhaps the GSI one, which I think you said was doing on Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday is the day.
Are we also, I know we've talked about doing this in the past, or maybe we have done in the past and I'm just not aware of it. Are we also creating one for ourselves that then when when we go to Olympia or when the mayor goes to Olympia or some city official may go to Olympia or talks with our legislators, we're pointing to that list? Or is this just for the purposes of trying to influence the other ones?
So this is my take on it is we're trying to develop a list that we use when we go to Olympia and we're talking with the various bodies. The the fact that we have an opportunity to provide insight into GSI's process gives us another opportunity to have that connection. But certainly, we want to have something that we're saying, these are our priorities. And so when we go to Olympia and other places, we have that with us.
We've never done that before. This is the first time. And I know AWC adopted theirs last week, but they are based on my meeting last Friday and then again today, they're still taking comments to kind of beef that up a little bit. So we still have a chance to influence theirs as well.
And and there there will be ample opportunities for both of the the chambers. They they tend to make a joint trip over to Olympia and AWC makes a separate trip over to Olympia to kind of work within the context of those agendas as a city. But we certainly want to have the ability when we meet with our own legislators and others to help echo what's a priority for Liberty Lake. And that's the goal today. And so as I look out.
Dan, sorry.
For context, on Turner account, we previously had partnered with Spokane Valley Fire and also Central Valley School District in support of, must say, paid support for legislative action. Is, are we still participating in that?
Not that I'm aware of.
That was specifically for the for the I ninety Barker to Harvard project. But if there is something that's on your guys' radar that we want to engage them with and same with them, if they want to engage with us, I think everybody would probably be very happy to join in that partnership again if it's for all our benefit.
I value the collaboration with local jurisdictions, trying to bring emphasis to action. So yeah, thanks for the clarification. I was trying to remember where we're at.
And and I would say that without a doubt, we want to make sure that we're in alignment with and at least have the opportunity to partner with both of those entities and maybe some others, maybe the the district, because there's some water rights issues that are out there that the district may be really interested in that we can partner with. So absolutely looking for those opportunities as well.
Well, on the topic, then, I'd volley the AWC's observations of public safety recruitment and attainment really resonates with me as an important action for us as a jurisdiction. We, through agreeing to, you know, agreements recently for our public safety, are witnessing increases in expense. And any tools made available to jurisdictions to to improve the conditions of attracting and retaining talent in public safety, to me, is going to be really important.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Go ahead. Sorry, I'm just going to do this a bit more informally and I'm just going to remind Jed, I'll be watching for your hand to go up, Jed, since we had the issue with somebody breaking in the meeting before.
I was kind of surprised the the valley one didn't have anything about the I ninety expansion, the three lanes. Because I think that's something that's critically important to us. And I know it's kind of fallen on deaf ears sometimes in Olympia, so I I would just hope, hope that we would add that somewhere on ours as well, even if the the valley one isn't necessarily in agreement with that.
So we're talking the third lane on I ninety?
Yeah, yeah. From Barker to state line.
That's still being talked about at the Valley Chamber meetings. I think Wash dot support is, it's coming and it's ebbing and flowing, but we do still have the support of our our local representatives. So that's a great point.
And I think including it now, so going into the twenty-five agenda, certainly because that's a budget agenda or a session, rather. We definitely want to have a year of having that on the radar screen more prominently than it has been, I think, is a great idea, Tom.
Thank you. I totally agree with the third lane on Barker as part of our infrastructure for transportation funding priority. And also for law, I would expand on law enforcement recruitment to law enforcement support and staffing. And by support, I mean working on the net, the safety net that has been adjudicated and readjudicated through Martin versus Boise and some of the knee jerk reactions to what are called the police reform measures. And I know that there's at least one fix that is being proposed, but I have not seen advanced bills on any of that yet. And that includes a clarification on some of the things that we have in our ordinance about homelessness and having locations and alternatives to incarceration available.
So when you say fix, you're talking specifically for Martin v. Boise and 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 that whole issue with?
That whole issue, yes, thank you.
So one of the things that I found interesting, and obviously through our strategic planning process, we talked a lot about infrastructure preservation. That was a, that was a big topic. I don't think it was the last one, but within the last couple of Greater Spokane Valley Chamber meetings, the Wash dot Eastern District Administrator, the new person that took that over, Todd Trepanier, he was here when we dedicated the opening of the Kramer Overpass. He used the analogy of the Titanic to describe the infrastructure preservation strategy at the state level. And and the the number that he used was about fifty percent, meaning for every dollar that's needed, only fifty percent is allocated. And so that's going to, over time, going to become a huge issue for every, everybody, including us. And so that's one of the ones that's on AWC's list. That's one of the ones that's prevalent within both of the chambers lists. And so if you're, if you're thinking about something that may be important to us, I think that would be a a prime example of something that we may want to consider.
So Mark, to paraphrase that, it's the soundness or the validity of Wash dot's funding for large capital projects the state's responsible for?
So I think if you put it in the AWC language, they're going to be lobbying for a a better solution for long term infrastructure preservation funding. And that could mean multiple things, right? They're not necessarily going down one track, but they're trying to get the state legislator to legislature to look at multiple options for resolving the preservation funding dilemma. And and as an example, last year, they tried to get legislation passed that was related to the the infrastructure fund, and that came up short. And so I think that would be a prime example for something that they're going to be focused very heavily on in in this legislature and future ones, if it doesn't pass this time.
I voice an agreement and say specifically state operated infrastructure in our region should be of a high priority, long term funding and support and sustainability.
Any, any other comments on infrastructure preservation?
Jed's got his hand up.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'll just, I'll just throw out the the couple that I was looking at, and and some of these do have to do with infrastructure. But I I feel like, for me personally, the legislative priorities coming from the Spokane Valley Chamber most closely aligned to what what I felt like had to do with Liberty Lake. I had repeal or reform HB ten fifty-four. Their comments regarding no state income tax, specifically capital gains, the hub project and the Army National Guard facility.
Right.
Can I ask a clarification, Mark? Do you know if if Phil and the hub are going to be asking for a certain amount this session? Or are they going to wait until the budget writing session?
So it's my understanding, and if you have any other information, is that they're going to wait until the next session when the budget is being formulated for the next biennium? Because a budget's been set for this biennium.
Yeah, I mean, they can amend it, obviously.
Sure.
And they and they will, but I just wondered if if they were going to try to push it this session or not.
That is not my knowledge, not to my knowledge, rather. Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll chime in. One of, only on AWC's priorities did I see any mention about affordable housing. And for me, that means different things. I think affordable housing means different things to many different people. But one of the, one of the things that I see nowhere in any of these documents is what is driving the cost of housing in relationship to what our state is doing on the, on the State Building Codes Council with the energy codes, with the, with these the cap and trade on emissions. It, those two topics do not go into the same sentence. When I hear affordable housing and then I hear, you know, we, we got to have, we can't have gas furnaces or we got to have these, these unattainable energy requirements that are very, coming down the pipe very, very soon. I mean, you talk to some of these manufacturers and they can't even, they're not even close to getting there to meeting these requirements on on, on the state or the federal level, for that matter. So to me, that's a big disconnect. So when you talk to people at the state legislature, because that's what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
When they, when you say affordable housing to some people, they think it's as AWC has cram them in as tight as you can get them. That's what it says. And to me, that's not affordable housing. That's affordable housing for a small spectrum of of the consumers. But affordable housing affects everybody from the top, from the bottom to the top. So why there's not more effort to rein back in that State Building Code Council is beyond me? Because they are doing some severe damage to the housing industry as a whole, not just when you say affordable housing. It's, it's more than just entry level housing. It's more than just multifamily. So I don't, I I don't know that we, as a, as a city, can get a lot of traction there. But if we and other jurisdictions are saying the same thing, I know there's a few at the state level that do say this. But I'm not, I I'm a little surprised that I don't see it more pronounced in any of these proposals.
Yeah, I can tell you that there was specifically related to the the building code piece of this. There was quite a bit of discussion about that last year when we were doing the same process with the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber. And so there, you know, there's definitely sentiment out there that relates to directly what you just said.
And I would add too, it's not just residential, it's commercial.
Right, absolutely. Yes, and so to, I want to try to condense the thought. Are we, is is the potential priority specifically related to the the building code council? Or is it affordability in general, looking for legislation to help remove some of the disconnects? What, what would, what would be the priority? Let's try to tease that out a little bit.
The biggest culprit is the building code council.
Okay.
And if we don't get specific, it will just be, as Phil says, everyone has a different idea of what that means.
Unfortunately, none of them are elected, they're all appointed.
Are there any openings that you can, that you can apply for?
I, I did my time in Olympia, that's why I'm sitting here.
Well, just to piggyback off of what Phil said, there is a movement by both parties, excuse me, in Olympia to do something with the low carbon fuel standard and the carbon tax. And there are a bunch of different ideas that are being thrown out there. And if we were a city, perhaps in Western Washington, I might not bring it up. But since we're a city right on the border, everyone is going over to North Idaho to fill up because of the cost of those things and what it's doing to gas prices. So we might want to put something on here, either reform or revise those two policies, the the carbon tax and the low carbon fuel standard. I know one of the proposals apparently that's being introduced is I think it's like a hundred dollar rebate to everybody in the state. And the carbon tax.
I saw nodding heads, but I want to make sure that I'm not adding things that we're not comfortable with. We, we good with that one? Okay. Jacob is the chief on the line.
Don't see him.
Okay. And I don't want to speak for the chief, but he and I have talked about this quite a bit. And one of the things that you see prominently pronounced in the GSI agenda, but but not necessarily in in the others, although it's implied in some of them, is the organized retail theft issue. That is a huge issue that affects all of our retailer, that causes prices to go up, it causes all kinds of mayhem. And so that's, that's something, not necessarily from a legislative perspective, but something that from a, what do we do about this? And how do we help businesses address this perspective? The chief and I have talked quite a bit about, and there's a large conversation happening at the statewide level regarding that. And so that may be something that you want to consider as well.
I'd second that motion. I went, when the mayor could not attend the retail theft conference that we had in downtown Spokane earlier. And I think that the priority for us would have to be supporting, again, law enforcement, which means that there needs to be a higher priority for the repeat criminal offender property crimes. And and especially enhancing the legislative penalties when it's an organized crime rate. Because as it is right now, we don't have in Spokane, the hit and smash and dash problems that some of the bigger cities do. But in essence, they are arrested and then they are released and then they continue their activity, which is the same as any criminal enterprise. Yeah, I think, and it the cost to us at the time, we used to say that for every dollar stolen, it costs the consumer ten dollars. I think that this year that it went up to fifteen, and that was from the state attorney general and the business community that was present.
So do we, Mayor, sorry?
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, I I don't get a lot of detail, but I do get the ship reports from the PD every day. And it's frustrating for me reading those, seeing how many of our retail stores don't want to be the victim. They trespass the people, but they don't press charges in so many cases, and that's so frustrating. From, I can imagine how how our, how our officers feel, because they end up chasing the same people and all the stores want to do is trespass. And Home Depot's been doing a little bit more lately, but I think, you know, there needs to be a big education push for the businesses as well. And I don't know how, how to go about that.
And I think that's part of what the the chamber is trying to accomplish. In terms of kind of phrasing this as a placeholder, do we want to say something like supporting legislation to help curb organized retail theft? Something like?
That would be especially legislative then. Law enforcement is doing their job, they're arresting them, they're finding them, that they're getting released.
Can I chime in? Yeah. It's not just organized crime for retail establishments. I mean, you've got infrastructure that that's going up, that's getting debased every time you turn around. Just passing the north south freeway, brand new, put up, and it's got graffiti all over it. Which is sad, so it's the same thing. What are we doing to offset, to make sure that taxpayers aren't paying over and over again for something that they pay for first time, hoping that it stays pristine?
And I, there's a lot of things that I think fit into up here where we're talking about giving law enforcement more teeth on a lot of different things, right? Both of these things would fit, and also what Councilmember Van Orman just mentioned would fit into that. So we we may have to revisit some of these law enforcement related issues and see if we can come up with a a singular priority or or maybe agree to break them out into multiple. But there's, there's all kinds of things in that arena. And if, and you may remember the last time the chief was here and he put the the stats up, the the numbers, you know, the the rates may not be changing all that much, but the numbers, the raw numbers are going up, right, for everything, so.
Um, I, I do think we should add on their hub. And the reason why is because for the same reason we were talking about the third lane on Barker, in-state line. It'll be good to have it on there for consecutive years, and the Valley Chamber does have it on theirs as well. It's on the third, fourth page.
And it's on GSIs as well. So we're, we're talking hub, sports center, outdoor field.
Yeah, yep. And then the other one I was going to mention is the South Barker Road Corridor that that the Valley Chamber has on theirs, which is on page three. We should probably put on ours as well, because that impacts people who live in the River District. Because they would obviously be getting off on on Barker and going home that way.
Page three of the valleys, you said, Chris?
Yeah, it's the South Barker Road Corridor. It's the Valley's request to expand Barker from Mission to Appleway.
So with some of these, and I'll ask the question, is, is that something that we want to put on our own priorities list? Or is that something that we want to support on the Greater Spokane Valley's agenda? And and that's a question, that's not me saying one or the other, right?
And that has already affected us greatly over the last years, based on, you know, the projects that have been held up because the valley contesting what we're doing. So I think it's in our best interest to support that request as well. I don't know about everybody else.
And I think it falls under the quality of life issues.
Okay, so the South Barker Road. If y'all see misspellings at her, don't say anything, because I'm going to come back and revise these. What else? Any, anybody else? I, I like the approach that Phil took earlier. He had something that stuck in his craw and that led to a discussion of a priority. Are there any other things like that? Are there any things that you see on some of these that you don't agree with, that we want to consider opposing? Or or other issues that are just out there?
Well, there's one actually on the AWC agenda that could greatly affect us. It already does to a point. So they have it on here, body worn cameras and dash cameras. Support local efforts to implement use of body cameras and dash cameras as a tool. Explore updates to the Public Records Act to further protect privacy and reduce the costs associated with use of camera technology. I know that's a huge burden to us right now. It was when I was at the mayor's conference, I was talking with the mayor of Tico, which is, I don't know, how big are they? Like eight hundred people or something? They're up to a page one thousand on a public records request. So I know that Sock D and Aaron have both spent countless errors. And this doesn't include the time that Kelsey puts on in on this side.
So with respect to re- reforming public records, what, I remember seeing that.
Okay, it says, explore updates to the Public Records Act to further protect privacy and reduce the costs associated with the use of camera technology.
More affordable housing.
So how do we?
From me, from, I'll just read it from AWC. They want to develop an approach to development density increases, lockability, multimodal, that's great, remove barriers to condominium development and ownership. Goes against everything I've ever heard from the people. Goes against everything I've ever heard from the people of the city. They don't want more apartments, don't want more multifamily. And so that goes against directly what I hear on the street. Um, the other thing I I just, when I read, when I read over this document, the thing that stuck out to me is. I find myself agreeing with probably ninety percent of the GSI information they put out. The other five percent is they're just not projects in our city. Doesn't mean I don't support them, but they're not a priority for me.
Right.
Um, but when I read over the um Washington uh uh AWC's uh priorities. Um, there's a lot of reference to supporting the state. And I thought they were a city org- uh organization, not a state organization.
Totally agree.
So. So when I think about how much we pay to be a part of these organizations, it really annoys me. That this is the result uh of their recommendations. Um, so it just. No nothing we can probably do about it, but maybe the next time when I, what's the membership thirty thousand dollars?
Oh, AWC is not nearly like much.
All I'm saying is that's part of this bigger discussion.
Yeah.
When it comes to AWC, that's why in the past you've probably heard me not agree with AWC quite a bit, and these are some of the reasons why. Um, so I'm I'm here. I think we're all here for the city. Um, but there's many references to the state here in this document, and I don't agree with most of them. So that's all I'll say.
So uh let's circle back to the to the priority. Are you are you saying? You want to oppose?
Well, you you just asked what don't we agree with?
Right, right. I'm I'm trying to.
Don't fall for it, but I did.
So so are you proposing that we that we have a priority opposing the no?
I'm not. I'm not saying we call it out as an opposition.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Priority that I think is something that pertains to our city.
Got it.
Yeah.
To go along with what Phil said, though, I think one of the um. Rubbing points for for our city and what the residents have said they wanted is our adherence to the Growth Management Act.
Yes.
And there were some pieces in there about adjusting the Growth Management Act, which I think would be more in line with what our residents have said they want to see for a city. So as far as. Instead of being opposed to something, being for something, I think that would be more in line with what I would be interested in is. Some amendments to the Growth Management Act uh as a priority.
Agreed.
So that is one of the items I had on my list. I'm glad you said that because I would have pointed that out at some point if I didn't hear it. So uh. So amendments to the Growth Management Act to to give. Local governments more participation in the planning process, more.
Feels like greater flexibility in adhering to it.
Okay.
If that makes sense, and I don't know if somebody has better words to put in there, but. I feel like some of the the pinch points that residents have talked about, like the density piece that people are um worried about here. Might be alleviated um if it fit better for Liberty Lake versus some of the bigger cities where um that urban sprawl really is an issue.
And the Valley Chamber has a a couple of good lines. Um, on page three about that strongly supporting amending the GMA.
Yeah.
To address significant population fluctuations and enhance local government's role in the GMA planning process.
So what I so what I've got here is the to amending it to give us the flexibility on implementation. Um, and and we can, we can wordsmith that to get it to where everybody wants it to be. Are there any other? Uh, I heard. Dan, were you gonna contribute on that?
Just trying to clarify the observation. I think it relates to flexibility of local jurisdictions to participate. Um, I don't have a lot of immediate observation to what our currently defined participation is, but. I always think more local than less is better.
And or participate. Annie.
I think the one other topic that I wanted to see if there was some consensus on. It's on the AWC and it's also on um the Greater Spokane Valley in a different area, but it's around. Access to be behavioral services, including substance abuse, and I think that ties in a little bit with. The law enforcement piece that we have. Um, jail isn't treatment, and we have a lot of people who are um have co-occurring disorders. Um, it kind of ties in sometimes with the housing too, from my perspective in my day job. Um, but I think that having additional providers um. Providing those services in the communities would really help alleviate some of the other broader issues. So I know that um maybe there's not that perception that we have that particularly in Liberty Lake, but I think we do need to be a part of the bigger regional. Piece of that because we're sharing the jails, we're sharing a lot of those resources. So I don't know what other people think about. Um, adding that and it's on both of the priorities, so.
So I can tell you that last year, this was a. Almost unanimous topic, right? It was that, and it was related to the. At the time, the potential Blake fix. You're you're talking about diversion, but there's nothing to divert.
Yeah.
Anyone into, right? So there needs to be funding for these things that you're talking about, so. What does that sound like? Is it supporting legislation to? Provide adequate funding for behavioral health resources? What is what does that sound like?
Capacity for behavioral health services.
Funding capacity?
Mark, the way the valley puts it is support legislation that will improve access to physical and behavioral health services and strengthen the health. Care workforce. I think that's.
We're just gonna take the valley's wording and.
Is the very last sentence especially, I think.
Read it, read it again for me, Tom, so everybody.
We support legislation that will improve access to physical and behavioral health services. Again, this goes to the law enforcement party um and strengthen healthcare workforce.
Are we okay with that? Do we want to add the funding piece to that? Because that's the issue, right?
And that's in the AWC one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Um, supporting continued state funding for cities to help communities establish alternative response program like. Corresponder programs, diversion programs, et cetera. But that's in the AWC one.
So we want to, we want to in some way merge those two concepts, okay?
Jed made the comment earlier about the Army uh National Nerd Facility. And I think we should probably put that on there as well as a city priority.
From an investment perspective on that, okay.
Yeah, just support the land swap.
Okay.
And one other thing I was gonna mention, it may not be a city priority, but it may just be one we want to support. Um, and that is the uh request by the Performing Arts Center. For construction of their facility, even though it will be in the city of Spokane Valley. I know a lot of Liberty Lake. Kids are gonna probably be participating uh there and it's probably gonna be a a huge draw. So it may not be a city priority, but we may want to.
Sure.
Support, yeah.
Show support for the Performing Arts Center.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm curious to know um if people have any thoughts on supporting. Um, I think it's uh Greater Spokane Valley. Down on their bottom around childcare and affordable childcare and reducing, um, I think it said streamlining. And reducing the barriers to entry into the childcare industry. Um, to increase supply. Um, what I have heard in our community is that there's a short supply. I experienced that as a parent as well. Um, the cost of childcare is um amazing. Um, and I'm wondering if there's any support that we can lend as a city to reducing that so that people who are wanting to work are able to do that and. Eat.
And that's on my list and that is uh directly related to economic development.
Right.
Yeah, and so what would what does that? What does that look like for us in terms of supporting? What are we? What are we supporting? The easing of the barrier or how did you phrase it originally?
Well, I I phrased it right out of um the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber, um, but I think. Um, making it easier for people to enter that workforce is is part of it. Um, and then supporting reduction in cost or something along those lines.
AWC also includes um expanding access to preschool, including universal pre K.
Some um.
I think the way the the um Valley Chamber has it uh worded is is pretty, pretty strong, especially that last sentence. Yeah. But it says, we strongly support measures that would reduce the regulatory burden on childcare providers. Making childcare more accessible and affordable for all families and specifically uh supporting uh. The regulatory streamlining and reduction of barriers.
So I know I saw that because I wrote it down, but which page are you?
Second to last paragraph and page four.
Oh, got it. Okay. And we're okay with that concept? And in terms of y'all's comfort level with echoing that wording?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I just have to say it. I'm looking at the one for property tax cap. Revised the property tax cap to tie it to inflation up to. Three percent, and we're talking at the same time out of the other side of our mouth, affordable housing. How do you do that? People are losing their houses. They're getting to where they're they're building their home. And all of a sudden, their on fixing comes. Now what? I um I have a problem with that.
Wendy, just uh, I said I I spent. The better better part of two days over the last several business days with a lot of the smaller cities. And I would kind of had your feeling about it to start as well, but when you look at some of these other cities that don't have any other avenue. To increase their budget, they may be rural, they may just be very small. We're very fortunate here that we have a robust and growing sales tax base. Um, this doesn't obligate anybody to, you know, go up, you know, over one percent, but I think. Having that tool for some of some of the smaller cities that are having issues. And I I would I would support giving them that option. So we don't, I mean, our proposal this year here is zero percent, so it's nothing. I see us wanting to do in the future, but for other cities, yeah. But for other cities, I can see where it could be very important to their success.
And I believe the proposal is. To give them the option, not not to require that it go, right? So.
Well, they'll take the option.
Well, we don't. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I have one I'd like to see us add, and that is simply stop the unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
So I I I heard an amen and I see a lot of nodding heads.
Because really, as I look over these significant issues, if they would stop. Doing that, then we wouldn't be talking about a lot of these.
Exactly, exactly. And I think part of the issue too is like, it feels like. Sometimes when things are passed and legislation is passed, there's actually not an understanding of what the market value of anything is to implement anything. Having implemented something that has been legislated, so um and then they're surprised, like you need four more million dollars and it.
Yep.
That should probably be number one.
Yeah.
So we're at roughly seven forty-five. I'm I'm sorry, six forty-five. Um. And so do we want to put any effort into trying to condense this? Do you want me to do that and get it back to you? Um, are there other things that you propose adding to this that we need to consider uh with the remaining time?
I think it's a great initial set mark, and if you would uh wordsmith that into um resolution format, I think that would.
Yeah, and we still have some time to work on our our own with with regards to the stuff for GSI. Um, yeah, let's do whatever we can to get that to them at the deadline and then. If we need to add a short workshop during another meeting, but we we need to get this done and in the hands of our legislators before. The session starts.
Yes, absolutely. That's the goal. Uh, and with uh hopefully a a month in advance or so, so they can chew on it. Um, is there any objection to? If there is commonality or even perceived commonality to try to do some merging? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a a quick note, um Senator Patton will be here for our meeting on the eighth for an update. It'll give us a. Give us an opportunity to possibly talk to some about these as well. We won't probably have time for everything, but those heavy hitters.
We'll just give him these, then so you can take them with him.
Yeah, I would just say this, the GSI uh uh information is, the template is well thought out, gives you the base, the. The main liners and then it gives supporting facts below. So I like that concept, something you can hand out.
Yeah. Yep.
If that's something you could put together in your free time.
So, yeah, so the goal would be to have and and preferably a, you know, a one pager, right? So you're not carrying around a pan, I mean, a a binder, but. Yes, that would be the goal to have something that we can hand out.
Thank you.
Tom.
And if you would do like you did last year, Mark, and keep us up to date on specific bills, I'll feed some to you that. The interest, I think, to law enforcement and community safety, but not just to track them. But for everybody that's in here to testify up for or against them. They listen to the city officials and you will get time to do it and it, we really should be doing it.
Yeah.
And and that's gonna, I'm glad you brought that up because that's that's part of what we're going to talk about as this gets finalized is that now now that we have this. Framework, what do we do with it, right? And that's absolutely part of what we do with it is that. Uh, and and with the remote testimony option now, um, it's really easy to do, and so that's gonna be an important piece. Any other comments before we end the workshop? All right, well, I'll tell you that um I'm I'm happy that we're doing this. This is gonna be an annual thing. I want to make sure that we're able to. Get those priorities identified so that we can have an impact on the legis- legislative sessions. I appreciate the the feedback and I'll get this condensed back out to you. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. We'll be back at seven o'clock. All right, everybody. Uh, welcome to our Tuesday, October seventeenth regular council meeting here in City Hall. We also have the Zoom option. Uh, we are going to go ahead and start our meeting um with the invocation given by Councilmember Dunn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together, to listen and speak of this place, this wonderful place we call home. We're grateful for the moments and we're grateful for the patience and we're grateful for the listening. Amen.
Okay, go ahead and call the meeting to order. And proceed with a quick roll call. Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Foliar.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer's online.
Present.
All right, we can hear you. That's a good sound check. Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Salberg.
Here.
All right, all present and accounted for. All right, we're going to roll into agenda approval. Mayor Pro Tem.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Um, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 All right, motion passes seven zero. And we jump forward to citizen comments. Uh, so we have one already signed up for in person, so. If you're in the audience, would like to make a citizen comment, we have these yellow half sheets by the door. If you could please fill one out and get it to Kelsey at the end of the desk over here. Um, and if you're online and would like to make a comment, please send a note to um. Our meeting host in chat and he will get my attention. Remember, we've got a three minute limit. It can be any topic. It's strictly comment only, no back and forth, but if we need to follow up, we will make sure we have your contact information and the clock will be displayed here. In chambers and on Zoom, so we'll start with Mike Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mike Kennedy, uh, citizen. I'm here speaking in behalf of the Spokane County Civil Service. I'm a member of that organization and uh uh recently, as you, everybody is probably aware, we enacted the one here in the Relate. We got three good individuals that volunteered with that. Uh, they're in the process of trying to get organized and set up even like that. And they're sort of getting their feet wet. Uh, this last month, I was able to invite Joe Mann came with me to our county meeting. He was able to. Get introduced there, give a little talk, and he was able to participate in our meeting. They've also committed to assist him and our other individuals on the Liberty Lake Commission to get started. On helping out as much as we can, so I'm really pleased about that. Uh, civil service is something that we've had for a period of time that was sort of active and it wasn't. And I'm really encouraged that we've put the effort into that. I really encourage the council to continue to do their due diligence to. Research what the civil service is, what the responsibility is, because the responsibility is extremely important. And the authority that they have for the decisions they have are as of the equal as a council. By able to make some of their own rules regulate. By able to make some of their own rules, regulations and things of the sort here, more so where they're not supervised by the council and stuff. They do have that sort of power and that's the benefit to be able to work directly with them and understand what their responsibility is. So we can move forward, have a good. Police officers and how they can be dealt with and to. And train things of the sort here. So one recommendation that came up that, uh, Spokane, uh, County. Civil service has that they even threw out is that they would recommend for us to seriously consider. That going from three to five. Individuals, maybe moving forward. The benefit is when there's three, sometimes it's difficult and you can't have all three. And you just have two, or it might come down to just one or two is doing the majority of the work. Like Joe Mann is really splitting a lot of time and effort and I got a lot of respect for Joe. The time and effort he's putting in to get this going. If there's five, then there's more individuals to carry the weight of that. So. Once again, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody here in chambers? All right, not hearing any. Do we have anybody in chat? Nope. Okay. And we will go ahead and move on to. Um, announcements, proclamations and special presentations. I guess that would be me. Um, so I will be, uh, reading my twenty twenty-four budget message. Um, binders will be out in a couple of days. And, uh, we'll get, have a copy, um, of the letter for everybody at the end of the meeting. Go ahead and go over there. Okay, oh boy. All right, um, City Council and Liberty Lake residents, I am honored to present to you the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. With so much activity in twenty twenty-three, some projects were pushed to twenty twenty-four as staff managed more work than ever before. And as we continue to work through other organizational realignment, including a well-deserved retirement. Twenty twenty-three brought the completion of many projects. Completion of the Kramer Bridge, a key factor in improving circulation within the city. Reducing first responder response time. And reduction in mileage and route time for Central Valley School District bus routes. Completion of the Trailhead Golf Course Pro Shops, Swing Suites, Banquet Room and Expanded Parking. Completion of the Public Works Building on Kramer Parkway. Installation of three more flashing pedestrian crossings and several solar powered speed limit signs. Kickoff of Citizens Academy. Reconvening of the Civil Service Commission. Reconfiguration of Liberty Lake Road Southbound Left Turn Lane into expanded. The northbound left turn lane towards I ninety east. State legislator, legislature approval of funds to appraise two pieces of property. That are key to ongoing discussions with the Army National Guard for a readiness center north of I ninety east of Kramer Bridge. Change in the risk management provider resulting in a hundred and sixty thousand dollar a year savings. And the adoption of Zen City software as a tool for community engagement. Once again, there is great news to report about the city's strong financial position. We will start off twenty twenty-four with a beginning general fund balance of six, seven point six million dollars. That's thirty-eight percent above where we started in twenty twenty-three. Cash reserves for the general fund must be at a minimum of twenty percent of budgeted operating revenue. Approximately two and a half months. In twenty twenty-four, it is expected to be forty-six percent. The restricted reserve fund continues to carry a balance of approximately fifteen percent of operating revenue as well as required by ordinance. And sales tax is on track in twenty twenty-three to hit six point two eight million dollars. One point one nine million or twenty-three percent higher over what we budgeted for twenty twenty-three. Given our strong financial position, I am asking council to approve a zero percent property tax change for the third year in a row. The Liberty Lake property tax rate is ninety-six per one thousand valuation in twenty twenty-three. And is expected to drop to eighty-six cents per one thousand valuation in twenty twenty-four if the zero percent change is approved. In twenty twenty-three, property tax revenue paid for one hundred percent of the library and forty-two point seven percent of the police department. In twenty twenty-four, it will pay for one hundred percent of the library and forty percent of the police department. Everything else we do here in Liberty Lake is paid for through a multiple, multitude of other resources. Earlier this year, I proposed replacing the three percent utility tax that our residents and businesses pay toward the streets maintenance fund. With a one percent, point one percent sales tax, ten cents on a hundred dollar purchase, which will be dedicated to streets maintenance. This will ease the burden on our city residents and businesses and spread the cost of maintenance to those shopping within the city limits. The council will make that final decision during their budget review and approval. As for expenses, general fund expenses are ju, are budgeted at fourteen million in twenty twenty-four versus fourteen point four million. That was approved in twenty twenty-three. Actuals for twenty twenty-three will not be available until late January twenty twenty-four. The expected twenty twenty-four general fund ending balance is five point five million. For twenty twenty-four, we have a multitude of projects ahead of us again, some which pushed from twenty twenty-three. We'll see the opening of Bent Grass Public House at Trailhead. The Trailhead Driving Range Poles and Nettings Replacement. Installation of Smart Signal Control moved forward from twenty twenty-three. The additional flashing pedestrian crossings, we try to target three per year. Development of master plan for the remaining four point four acres at Town Square. Appleway redesign. Mission Avenue overlay design. Sprague overlay design. Intersection improvements at Country Vista and Appleway. Cities Facilities Master Plan. Orchard Park Storage Expansion for Winter Glow. Additional upgrades to IT security. Abatement of the structure at fourteen twelve North Aladdin. And kickoff of the comprehensive plan analysis, which is a multi-year project required by the state. We'll also see the design for the interior of the future library location with construction in twenty twenty-five. The replacement of the Pavilion Shell Park Shell, excuse me, replacement of Pavilion Park Shelter Roof and Tennis Court Resurfacing. Resurfacing of the Rocky Hill Courts. Increase in community engagement outreach activity and finally our sidewalk master plan. Last year, we added much needed staff positions. This year you will see the same, along with a realignment of the organizational chart with the following additions and changes. Director of Public Works to split that work off from operations and maintenance. This new position will be split between. Planning, engineering and building services, streets and capital projects. Will be adding a full-time procurement position to streamline that process. Removal of IT position replaced by expanded contract with Executech for higher level day-to-day support and strategic planning for IT. The addition of two full-time officers. Code and regulations enforcement, reporting to planning, engineering and building services while working with the police department. Conversion of current contract building inspector and administrative assistant positions to direct full-time employees. Associate Planner. A thirty hour per week librarian in the fourth quarter. Recreation coordinator in the second quarter. Parks Superintendent. And additional feat FTE and one seasonal position for Trailhead. Over the next six to eight weeks, the council will review the budget, evaluate priorities and request changes or additions based on those priorities. Community input is very important in this process and I encourage all of you to participate, whether it be in person, by Zoom or emailing me or the council. Yes, we are growing, but the future continues to look bright. Along with that, sales tax revenue will also grow to support our needs. Our community is vibrant and safe because our employees and residents care so deeply about Liberty Lake. When I try to explain how special our city culture is to outsiders, they have a hard time grasping what we have here. So thank you to the council members, city employees and residents for keeping Liberty Lake the gem that it is. Thank you. Hey, um, I don't think we have any other announcements, proclamations or presentations, so we'll go ahead and move on to reports and inquiries. We will start with City Council. Anybody? Have anything to report over the last couple of weeks? All right. Go ahead, sure.
Got this Saturday, we're doing the bed build for Sleep in Heavenly Peace. Don't forget that. So if you've got some extra time. From eight to twelve o'clock, we could use your hands. Um, and, uh, the Saturday after that, we're going to go ahead and take those beds that we've just built. Take pictures of the, uh, nicer bed racers and race them down the street. So it should be a lot of fun. Um, and I'm hoping a lot of you guys come on out to see it.
It was a lot of fun last year. Looking forward to it. Okay, um, so my report, lots of meetings. Um, like I said before, it's legislative agenda time. Um, we did have the CEO and a couple of other staff members from Visit Spokane come and meet with Mark and I here in City Hall to talk about. Expansion of what they're doing, what they, what more they can do for Liberty Lake. Uh, in case you don't remember the, uh. The cost for Visit Spokane comes out of, uh, some of our tourism promotion dollars, so it's not coming directly out of the city's budget. Um, we do have, I have them in my car. If anybody wants to stick around for the updated map, there is a breakout piece. Finally now for Liberty Lake with some of our businesses and restaurants. One of them was lucky enough to get mentioned twice. Um, oversight, but, um, you've seen the Visit Spokane guides, but they're really, um. With the new CO, CEO in place, they're really making some strides. On, um, focusing more on some of our smaller cities to try to get the word out and drive some more, um, tourism to us. So looking forward to that partnership. Um, GSI Board, uh, had a, um, meeting with Spokane County Emergency Management as for an update on, um. Medical Lake and Elk Fires, Greater Spokane Valley Chamber, um, Government Action Committee. Took place. We also interviewed, um, a student representative for the Parks and Arts Committee. Uh, and we will be bringing her forward, um, for confirmation on the eighth. The Parks and Arts Committee actually meets. Two days prior to that. Um, so she's going to attend the, the meeting, um, as a, as a observer. And then we'll hopefully get her confirmed on Wednesday. We're looking really forward to having her here. Um, also spent Friday in Leavenworth at the Mayor's Exchange. Again, I've told a couple of people that I always feel so much better. Uh, when I leave those meetings because I hear. Some of the struggles that some of our smaller communities and even communities of our size, um, struggles they're having. Um, and even you look at To, Toquilla, which is one of the bigger cities, um. Something major must have come up because I was talking to their mayor the evening before and he ended up not coming to the session, but. When we were talking, they're five million dollars in the hole. Um, how do you recover from that? Um, it's the, they're in dire straits. So when, when we look at our revenue streams and. And how well and smoothly we have things running here, it really makes me feel better. Tell you the truth. Um, today, um, drove to Ritzville for an hour or so meeting with, um. A lot of the AWC District One, um, representatives, including, um. Couple of the board members, Deanna Dawson, their CEO, and of course Betsy Wilkerson from Spokane City Council is. Um, the current president of, uh, AWC. They're making a huge effort this year. You know, I've been going to AWC meetings since twenty-ten. Um, never knew the CEOs personally. Um, they are making a huge effort this year, making their rounds around the state. Getting personally involved with the cities and hearing their stories, big, small, uh, sharing successes and sharing challenges with each other. So. Um, with, with Betsy being in place and, and with the outreach, um, that their CEOs having, I think. We're in a really good position here in Eastern Washington to continue to have our voices heard. Um, and, and I know, uh, Mark put out the, we've got the plug on our desks here, um, for those who, um. Are interested and I'll be going again. I've gone multiple times over the years to the elected officials, essentials. Learn something new every year. So even if you've been once or twice or three times, I, I recommend signing up to go again and it is in December. Um, other than that, upcoming meetings, more Visit Spokane Board meetings, a lot of legislative. Agenda meetings. Uh, we do have the Transportation Symposium at Center Place. I think it's this Thursday morning or Friday morning, uh, with SRTC. So we'll be going over some long-term plans for that. We do have the, um, GMA Spokane County Elected Officials Public Hearing and. Um, Lisa usually attends those and since I'm double booked with a Visit Spokane Board Meeting, she'll, she'll be attending and giving me an update. Uh, but those, those are going to become more and more important as we make our way through the comprehensive plan updates over the next couple of years. Um, and then more policy meetings, uh, so. Policy, policy, policy. So if you guys have any questions, uh, feel free to reach out. Um, next we have the City Administrator Report.
Mayor, just real quick.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I was looking at the agenda and I didn't see you. Go ahead, Jed.
Uh, no worries. Uh, I just wanted to report, um. The, on the fourth, the day after our last meeting, uh, I was able to take my son and attend the Unlock Your Future event at the Hub Sports Center. Uh, Phil mentioned that, uh, they hosted over fourteen hundred middle schools from. Twenty-one schools, uh, middle school students from twenty-one schools and sixty businesses there. So it was a great event. Um, it was fun to take my son through there, kind of show him some different options that might be available, uh, this next year as he graduates. Um, the next day on the fifth, I was able to go and represent the city in the signing for the proclamation on the, uh, Fire Prevention Week with Spokane Valley Fire Department. So that went really well.
Great, thank you. And thanks for standing in. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay, City Administrator.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, members of the City Council and, and folks in the audience, uh, just a quick report for, uh, you all this evening. Uh, on October the nineteenth, which is the day after tomorrow, we've got the first session of the. Fall version of the City Academy and that's going to be over at Trailhead. We still do have slots available. So if there are. Uh, folks here, uh, that may be interested, or if you know anyone who would benefit from this or who has expressed an interest in learning more. About the city and how it operates, this is something for them. And so, um, they can still go to our website and register up to the day. Um, of the first session, which is the nineteenth. Um, the Library Halloween Party is coming up on October the twenty-sixth, which is a week from, uh, this coming Thursday. And that's going to be at the library from six PM to eight PM. And I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm misremembering this, I think the theme this year is minions. Is that correct? Okay, all right, awesome. And so if you have a minion costume, uh, wear it and, and show up. Uh, the unfunded project survey, if you all remember when Lisa presented. The first draft of the capital facilities plan, we had talked about going out and getting some engagement started with the public regarding the unfunded. List and we've done that. And to date, we have about three hundred and fifty responses. So it's been well received. We've got a lot of response. Um, but this is going to come to an end on October the twenty-ninth. So. If, if you're in the audience tonight and you would like to participate, there are, uh, paper surveys on this table. If you'd like to. Uh, participate that way, you're welcome to do that. It's also linkable from the city's website. Uh, at the banner at the top, it'll take you right to the unfunded project survey. Uh, Leafen Beach Drop Off, which is something that the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District does every year in partnership with us. Uh, is starting on October the thirtieth. Uh, we talked about this at the last council meeting and that's going to be out at the water reclamation facility up here. Um, on Harvard and it's going to extend through, I believe it is the first week in December. Um, but there's much more information on the district's website if you're interested in, in learning more about this. Uh, and this is a drop-off event. This is, uh, the, each individual has to take. Uh, the, the Leafs to the reclamation facility and drop them. And then finally on the events and reminders, we've got election day coming up on November, November the seventh. And I point this out. To remind everyone that, uh, we will be rescheduling the first November meeting to the next day. Uh, November the eighth. So remember that and I'm sure that we've got the calendar updated to reflect that. Any questions about the events and reminders? All right, moving on, we've got a couple of staff introductions and so we're pleased to, uh, invite, uh, and we'll start with Kyle. Uh, he will give you a brief introduction to Sarah and then we'll move on to, uh, Lisa. Kyle, go for it.
Uh, thanks, Mark. I would like to apologize to council and Sarah. I did not give her adequate time to be here. And so she was unavailable. Uh, but she does come, she comes to us from the private sector, but she does have extensive public sector experience at the Spokane Airport. Uh, for our new accounting and payroll technician, she has over, uh, over twenty years of experience in that field. So we're very, very excited. Uh, to have her onboard. If you, if you. Take a peek in the mayor's office on your way out tonight, you will see that she has been invaded by our esteemed outgoing city treasurer, Anne Marie. As we play musical offices back in our wing, because we are in full-blown training mode. Eric's taking over for Anne Marie and we have, uh, brought Sarah aboard as of Wednesday. So if you drop in, um. Introduce yourself. I could not be more excited to have, uh, Sarah aboard and a full staff.
No, and congratulations to Anne Marie on her retirement. I think, I don't think she was expecting to be able to do it this early. Um, but I wish I was in her shoes.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Kyle. And then Lisa is going to come up and introduce, uh, Anthony to you. Lisa.
So I'm very excited to introduce Anthony Sanich, our new, uh, project manager. Um, he started on Wednesday also. And he comes with a wealth of experience in construction and trades. But also a ton of experience as a project manager in the public sector. So, welcome.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here and, uh, I look forward to working with the city and, and helping things out.
Does anybody have any questions for Anthony? Put him on the spot.
Welcome. Thank you.
We already have him very busy.
All right, um, now for department reports, you've all received the, um, monthly distribution. All right, um, now for department reports. You've all received the, um, monthly distribution of reports, and now is your opportunity to ask any questions that you may have about any of those.
And Mayor Bertim.
Yes, sir.
I just, I just have one as I was looking through Lisa's report. Uh, it talks about the Department of Ecology, uh, exempting permitting requirements. Can you expand on that just a little bit? What does that mean for us? Cause I know we've been doing, holding money for a master plan and all that.
We are in the process of doing the master plan, and, and we did get a, a pretty robust grant from Ecology to do just that. Um, it's actually pretty exciting. One of the reasons why we wanted to really, um, invest in this master plan is because we exceeded the population threshold that required us to do, um, the MS four permit, which is the National Pollution Discharge.
Wow.
Permit. Okay. NPDES. Um, say that three times fast. Long story short is that we, through the course of inventorying our stormwater plan and researching our historical records, we were able to demonstrate that number one, as you all know, we don't have any shorelines in our city. Number two, we were able to demonstrate that we are not discharging any stormwater to the waters of the state. And which is a big deal because we're, we have effectively implemented a citywide, uh, two oh eight program for, uh, stormwater management. That means that we don't have the requirement to do this NPDES permit and all of the reporting requirements, all of the, all of the, um, investment that's associated there with. Again, it's a great thing that we're doing the stormwater master plan because at the same time, we are putting together a capital facilities plan for some of our aging stormwater infrastructure so that we can maintain it well into the future and come up with, um, a strategy for how to effectively maintain our infrastructure, um, for stormwater in the long run. So, um, again, the, it's, it's actually pretty exciting that we were able to, to get there. And there's not too many communities that, uh, are able to do that.
I thought that was a good thing. That's why I wanted to talk about it. Thank you. Thank you, Wilson.
Any other questions on monthly reports?
Um, Jed, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I, I just wanted to say first of all, uh, thank you to all the departments submitting these reports. Uh, the, you guys are all very busy. Um, in, in particular, looking at the, uh, LLPD's report, um, some of the, some of the, the ones listed here under the significant cases from voyeurism to animal cruelty to a, you know, a chase ending in spike strips. Uh, I mean, I just want to say thank you to LLPD who is, you know, keeping us safe and, uh, making sure that our community, uh, stays safe. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, um, moving on to the next item, wanted to bring to your attention, um, and, and this is a, uh, an an ongoing, um, uh, turnover. We have boards and commissions that have seats that, uh, come up for renewal all the time. But in this particular case, we wanted to bring to your attention that we've got, uh, several current vacancies and a couple of upcoming vacancies that we're aware of that are outside of that regular schedule. And to let you know that we're, have already started and are going to continue to be recruiting, uh, to fill those seats. And so right now, those are three current vacancies on the planning commission, um, and one expected future vacancy. Uh, the Community Engagement Commission still has two current vacancies. Um, and Parks and Arts Commission has a current, uh, adjunct seat that is vacant. And so, um, when you add all of those up in addition to all of the seats that will come up for renewal at some point in time, we've got a lot of opportunity, uh, for civic-minded individuals out in the community to, uh, put in their application if they have an interest in joining one of these boards and commissions. And, and this is a perfect opportunity to remind everybody also that we had a group of twenty folks that went through the, uh, spring version of the City Academy. And one of our stated goals was to prepare people to become more interested in wanting to become, uh, a board and commission member. So hopefully we see a few of, of those, um, applications come in from those individuals. And I know that, that Lisa has reached out directly to that group and said, hey, if you have an interest in planning commission specifically, put your application in. So, um, any, any questions about current vacancies?
No, unfortunately, a couple of our longer-standing members have been, the planning commission have moved out of town. So, uh, we're sorry to see them go. Go ahead, Annie.
Uh, just one commission, uh, question. Are you looking at still getting the youth commission back up and going?
That is a good question. Um, we've talked about that, and I think that there are some opportunities to maybe have a conversation and looking at some, uh, options to engage youth that could include a commission, but also don't have to. And so at some point, maybe after the new year, I'd like to bring some options back to council for their consideration.
We've got an amazingly in, um, involved group at, through the library. So we want to see how we can take advantage of that and kind of, um, do something with, with that group, uh, along with the, what the former youth commissions would do.
Yeah, definitely. There, there's a lot of, uh, need to have engagement among that age demographic. And so we want to make sure that we're providing it. We just, I want to have that conversation with council.
Perfect.
Uh, and now I'm going to invite Lisa back up to the podium to give you a quick update on the Climate Resiliency Grant. And you've heard about this before. This is a, this is an update.
So, um, I've been, um, participating in a lot of webinars. Um, I just attended the APA Conference in Spokane, focusing specifically on climate resiliency. We're actually working with Parametrics to prepare the grant application that is due October thirty-first for this biennium. It had, the funds that we apply for in this biennium have to be used by, uh, July first, twenty twenty-five. Our comp plan is not actually due until July for, or June thirtieth, excuse me, uh, twenty twenty-six. And we also have the ability, the five hundred thousand that is dedicated to the ci- our city, um, is something that we can spend over several biennium. So we can actually hang on to some of the money for implementation. Um, however, the lift is pretty heavy because we have to deal with both the climate resiliency piece and also greenhouse gas emissions, because we are one of the eleven counties that has to plan for that and actually mitigate and, and, and target policies to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Um, there's a lot of technical lift to this. So, um, we are preparing the grant applications with the intent to, we have to apply for each grant by the biennium. So the thought is that we are going to be spreading this over actually three biennium. And we're prob- we're probably looking at, um, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but roughly a breakdown of about two hundred and fifty thousand for the first biennium, because it's a heavy lift with the science to enable us to do the goals and policies in the second biennium. So probably a hundred and fifty thousand there. Over both biennium, there's going to be a lot of community engagement. And by the way, speaking of youth, this is a great opportunity, not just for the comp plan, but in particular for climate resiliency, to really engage our, uh, our youth, um, in the process. Um, I think our, 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 our young people are very well aware of the issues that we're facing, and it's their future. So, um, we're really excited about using some funds to really focus on community engagement and really, um, involving, uh, the youth in this comprehensive planning process. Um, anyhow, long story short, um, the mayor, we have to, when we submit this grant application, it's due October thirty-first. And yes, yes, it's a short timeline, but it's, um, we're working with Parametrics on that to get that done. Um, we will be, uh, the mayor will need to sign a letter of intent to submit with this grant application. Because my timeline is so short, I wasn't able to actually share the grant application with you because it's literally being formed as we speak. Um, but again, we didn't want to miss the opportunity. And again, I think that there's opportunities within this to help with some other components. So climate resiliency actually bridges a number of the elements. It, if, it's affect, it affects housing, it affects transportation, et cetera. So we can use this grant to help us with other aspects of that, um, uh, of the comp plan, which is a heavy lift this time around. So I'm excited about this. I think it's, it really is an opportunity. And it's the state putting their money where their mouth is about not, um, creating unfunded mandates.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. And to round out my report, a quick update on the strategic plan. We talked quite a bit about this. Uh, the, the plan at this point is to distribute what I'm going to call a partial final draft of, of the plan to council early next week, so that you can start reviewing it and be ready to discuss on, uh, November the eighth, uh, when we'll have an item on there, um, for, uh, potential adoption. And so wh- what do I mean by partial final draft? Well, what I want you to review and to become comfortable with and to formulate any questions or concerns with is, uh, the heart of the plan, which is the, the values, the vision, the priorities and the results. The other stuff is going to be just telling the story of how we went through the process. And so if that's finished, you'll get it all. But certainly you will get the heart of that. Um, and so you can start reviewing that. And so, uh, that's the, that's the couple of next steps on the strategic plan. Any questions there? All right. Very good, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll be moving on to the Planning Commission Report. Welcome, Richard, who is retiring at the end of the year, at the end of his term to go spend some more time on the road.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, council members, I, I just want to go over what we've been doing over this past year, pretty much. But mainly these last couple of meetings we've had, we've, we've come to bring all our work together for looking at and, and making, uh, uh, approvals or not approving to send it on to you guys for, for your, uh, decision on, on some of the amendments we, we made. Uh, the biggest one that came was in the River District, uh, presented by Greenstone, and that was their open space, uh, where they take their, the parks that are home, owned by the Homeowners Association, as well as the green belt area underneath the power lines and the garden area and whatnot. And their proposal was to classify those as all open space under a new zone in the River District. And that open space had its own criteria, what could be allowed and not allowed. Uh, the biggest thing in that whole effort there with Greenstone and the public was the use of shipping containers for storage over there. That seemed to be the, the one item that nobody cared for that came to meetings. Uh, I, I recognize a lot of times we get people that don't care for something will be more outspoken than ones that think it's okay. But either way, we went ahead and listened to the community, talked amongst ourselves and, and made a decision to go ahead and forward that open space proposal on for your approval with our edits in it. And we, we deleted Greenstone's proposal, uh, or, or, or lined it out, their proposal to allow shipping containers. So that would force Greenstone to, uh, build some type of a building for storage. Uh, Jim Frank with Greenstone had even left it on the, on the table for us to, to do that. He, he was, uh, open to deleting the, making it our choice on storage containers being, or shipping containers being storage or building. So, so that'll be coming to you. We did ratify that at our last meeting, so that's coming to you. Think here an examiner sees it on the second of November, and then I believe the December meeting, December eighth, or something for you guys to, to go look at. Uh, so that was a big one. Lots of public comment, lots of participation in our meetings. Uh, the next one was River District was another Greenstone, uh, proposal on signage standards. This one, we chose not to forward or to approve to, our consideration is not approve that and, and to delay it until we do, uh, signage, uh, amendments to our city code next year. Uh, ones that are, are overdue or, or due to be worked on this twenty twenty-four. Some of the reasons we didn't, uh, like this is, is they wanted to reduce the need for permits for signage. And that was difficult because now it gets in harder to enforce standards. It gets harder to, to understand what people are doing. And, and some standards are timestamp standards, so you don't know when they start and stop on signages. Uh, they wanted to allow some larger signs. And one of the other things was to allow some of their, their standards they wanted would have, I would have said, an overpopulation of signs on properties. Uh, and so we, we looked at it and said, you know, we're not sure, staff didn't care for it a whole lot. We didn't care for it. And Greenstone staff really never came to agreement on everything. We, I think their comments that were made, uh, weren't well, well-received by the Greenstone, uh, proposal. So we said, nope, we're not going to, to, uh, agree to it. Uh, I mean, obviously it goes to you guys still for your, your consideration, but we, we chose not to move it forward. Third item we had was another one by Greenstone, and this was in the River District. And, and that was, it had to deal with, uh, I didn't write it down here, but it, it had to deal with the, uh, the updating their SAP to, for our, our landscape codes that we went through, I think in twenty twenty-one, if I remember right, we got that completed twenty-one or twenty-two. We completed our landscape codes. That was pretty straightforward, pretty much in agreement with what we had already worked on. Now applied to their River District stuff. So we did, uh, approve that and for going to the City Council with the recommendation to approve. I need to say, on, on all the remaining ones, we still have to ratify those in, in our November meeting, which will be the same day as your meeting. Just we start at four o'clock, so I think we'll be out of here. We're just going to do ratifications and then get out of, get out of that room. Uh, so that one, we didn't have any issues with. Well, well put together by Greenstone and worked well with our staff. Uh, the next one, Public Asim- Assembly and Community Event. Amy put this together and did an exceptional job. I think, uh, we all liked it. You know, our, our Assembly and Community Event wasn't defined well enough for staff to even look at permits and understand permits and be able to, to recognize what does impact, does this have with our city services and whatnot? And, and how to go. So a lot of confusion was taken out. It's clear, robust guidelines now. Uh, we, I think they balanced everything with, uh, community events and, and the responsible management of our city resources. Um, and the process should be streamlined, especially they're going to go online, uh, with it, where the online process will be streamlined. I think Amy's plan is to kind of have a, maybe a trial with it and, and a quick update if, if needed on, online processes too. So, uh, we, we did recommend that for approval, and that'll be a move in torture the City Council after we do the ratification again next month. Uh, the last two we worked on had to do with public facilities, uh, utility facilities. One, we, we, those right now are conditional use in our zones. We wanted to make those into limited use so that it, it alleviates some of the process for folks that, if we need, as, as Lisa said a number of times, if we need a water tower, we need a water tower. You know, if we need a utility, uh, something into their properties, we need to be able to have to do that and to do it quickly without a lot of, uh, a lot of paperwork and, and effort. So the process stays efficient. And you still got to meet all our criteria, all our, our, uh, criteria to do that. That was fairly simple one to, to push on. And, and we did, we approved that for recommendation, President City Council to, to go ahead and, and look at that. And our recommendation is to approve it. The last one had to deal with our utilities, and this is just mainly a security thing for you, public utilities. Uh, and, and even our city, uh, facilities, public facilities and utilities, but to allow chain-link fencing, which we don't allow in, in Liberty Lake now, and to allow barbed wire for obvious reasons. You know, this is kind of post nine eleven stuff, but it's, uh, it's needed to be, to be accomplished. So that's where we, we ended with six items will be coming your way. One of them's ratified, uh, the other five are not. And that one, again, we, we easily approve for recommendation for City Council to approve it. Last item I had, which we've already talked about, thank you, is we do have three vacancies on it. I'm going to step aside, uh, off the, off our planning commission and mainly because I bought some property away from this area that, that I will be taking my RV to and spending the winter in the south. So, uh, I, I just don't feel comfortable staying on a planning commission here when I'm not present. Uh, and I, I must say, I, I hate this because I really enjoy what I do on the planning commission. But it's, uh, it's also time for me to move on and enjoy some other things. So.
We've enjoyed having you.
Thank you. So you'll be looking at four vacancies for us. And hopefully we get the word out. I highly recommend we get it in the splash and and the other publication, if I can think of the name of it right now, but the other one in town that we can and get these things announced. And thank you.
Great. Thanks so much for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Get back to my agenda here. Um, Parks and Arts. Nancy, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Hill of the Parks and Arts Commission, the fun group, as I call it. We're very happy to announce that the basketball court mural is done. I mean, the colors are vibrant. The message of unity is there. And we're super excited. Got the word a couple of weeks ago that the Hoop Town USA Division of Hoop Fest has agreed to replace all four backboards at their expense. So they're in the current procurement process. We'll be able to take the old ones off, use those poles. And I was talking to Jen Campbell, probably paint those because they're like the silver color, paint them black because the backboards will be the nice black rim with the plexiglass and the Hoop Town USA. So I think you'll see that donation forum coming through from Hoop Town USA on your November eighth meeting. So you can watch for that. And we're hoping you'll approve their donation and we'll move ahead. We're not sure if we'll get installation this year, or we'll have to wait till spring. It depends on the supply chain. So we'll keep you posted on that. But if you haven't been down to see it, it's a great look. So moving on is this, oh, we made the story walk. Okay, I was expecting a skate park, but we'll that'll be the next slide. Story Walk, we got it installed in Orchard Park. It's a little different installation than we have in Rocky Hill, and we're still working on solving some maintenance problems there. It's a little lower. It'll be easier for kids to read. We've got the first book in. We've had some positive feedback. Tom Chamberlain said we may even decorate it for winter glow. You know how they are with their lights. So that's going to be a lot of fun. I think we'll get a lot of positive feedback on Story Walk. Now we'll move on to the skate park. Now the skate park, if you recall, we had some surplus budget from our basketball court and one of the artists, which is a Liberty Lake artist. We like their graffiti art, so we commissioned him on to do the graffiti art there. It's been a challenging project for him. I will say on the basketball court, when I talked to the artist and they were so had such positive feedback from the community and everyone was so excited. The skate park has been a little more challenging because he's trying to do each section separately. So the park can remain open because with all the weather and delays, we don't want to close the park for that long, but it's been very challenging for him. But he's close and it looks like we're gonna hopefully be completed before the end of the month. But then we have a 20 day cure time on the anti graffiti coating that goes over the top. So I'm not quite sure how we're going to manage that, but I'm sure Jen Camp and her team are gonna figure out a way to do that. But it really looks fantastic. And I think, you know, it's really going to tie all that area in and make for a vibrant fun spot for our youth and and our older folks too. So next slide, please. We got we got invited to the Liberty Lake Launch Academy. They contacted me and I had Laura Frank from the Parks and Arts Commission go with me. Oh, man, that was so cool. The third and fourth graders did a project on inclusive park features, and they had boards with like slides and zip lines and almost everyone had an ice cream stand. So I think we're lacking a couple of ice cream stands in our park. But they were focusing on the redesign of Pavilion Park, which is coming up here in, I think, 2025, maybe for the playground equipment. So they had actually a lot of great ideas. So maybe when it comes closer to time, we'll have to circle back around to that group. And then we had the fifth and sixth graders, and they presented the butterfly gardens and the pollinators. And that was so fun. They had really colorful posters and they had well prepared speeches. I think you had a a child there. And it was it was really, it was really a good day going and and listening to them and being a part of that. And I know the Liberty Lake Launch Academy is wants to be very engaged with the community. They're very civic minded. So I think we'll hear some more collaboration. And at some point, maybe a few of the kids will come here and maybe make a presentation to full council. But that was a lot of fun. We have two items on your agenda that Parks and Art supports, the program recreation fee schedule for 23 24, and then the approval of a contract with the inland chess recreation program. I'm excited about something other than sports, not that I love sports, but you know, to bring chess and some more intellectual events to the park, I think is going to be a lot of fun. So they're on your agenda, I believe, tonight for approval. And finalizing with the vacancies, Mayor, thank you for bringing forward the student. We're excited to fill that position again. We're also hoping that we get someone for our adjunct position. We have three members that are cycling till the end of their term. I'm one of those. I did put in my application. So hopefully somebody might approve me to come back because I've been having a lot of fun with it. It's a great group and and we really have some fun and cool projects coming up. Any questions?
All right. Thanks. Let me just make sure I didn't miss Jed. Okay, all good. All right. Thanks, Nancy. And last but not least on reports, Bill Genoys here from the Re Lake Sewer and Water District. Let's make sure we get you unmuted, Bill. Hold on.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you go. Yes.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Not much going on. Well, we are still renovating our district office. And I know it's inconvenient. It's inconvenient for our staff, but we still have access for the public to come and see us. I was it was interesting hearing about the fencing around facilities because we've been worried about that a little bit. And so that's nice to hear that we're going to go ahead with allowing us to do that. Leaf connection, Mark talked about that starts this October 30th, ends the 31st. Obviously, last year, we had some problems with leaf dropping and you know, snow and ice. And so we'll see how that goes. It seems like it's 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 a better season this year. So that'll be available to all the city residents. Bag your leaves, drop them off of the facility. We've got a big lot up there that we use for that. A final note is that I've been elected to represent Eastern Washington in an organization that that is called WashWOD. It's Washington Association of Sewer and Water Districts. And so Tom Agnew was very active in that for many, many years, and he's stepping aside. So I've taken over that role for him. And I'm looking forward to representing Eastern Washington. Thing about it is that we're District One. Two, three, and four are all on the West Side. So we need representation in this organization from our small group of districts over here in Eastern Washington. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Nice. Does anybody have any questions? All right, not seeing anything. So much for your update. All right, move move on here. We're trying to adjust the the temperature in the chambers here a little bit. It's got a little warm. All right, next up, we have workshop discussion with regards to Liberty Lake Lions Club Arboretum donation and match request. So we're going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Van Norman. It reminds you to get your mic nice and close. And there's some, there was obviously some information in your packet as well.
Thanks for the opportunity. And like I mentioned before, we have been putting on bed races for quite a while. This one that's going to be happening on Saturday is going to benefit the Elk and Elk Washington Fires, as well as the great fire over in Cheney West Plains area. What you have before you is we've raised $6,300. And we also have a anonymous donors that's going to pledge to purchase three metal picnic tables to go inside of the arboretum. For those that don't know what the arboretum is, it's located between City Hall and the Garden Ridge residential area. We started this back in 2008. So we've had two phases. This is going to be our third. And we hope to go ahead and get some picnic tables going inside of that area. Now we need the city council to perhaps do a match and help us make it a little bit grander than what we can afford to do. With that $10,000, we can afford to go ahead and put pavers in. But we can afford to go ahead and put a gazebo or three distinct coverings that Tracy Shaw showed you in the pictures that you have before you in the packet. So what he has on there. Let me get to my page. We could go with a large gazebo that could possibly hold a small musical quartet that would be anywhere from 30 to $40,000. Or we can do picnic area covers for eight to $10,000 each. Because the papers are already covered. They've got a place for them to already be. I guess the question that I have for the council is, can you include this project into the budget? For a match? And we are hoping to go ahead and sell the pavers to keep continuing to put more plants and so forth into the arboretum as time goes on.
So I guess at this point is further discussion with the council than when we get to starting to have the the budget discussions and we would, you know, someone would make a motion and second or and approve or not to put that into the budget, but open up for discussion with the council.
Anybody have any questions? That's where we're done. Go ahead.
So Wendy, I just want to recognize what a great thing it is to have volunteer groups in our community, specifically service clubs that get together to fundraise and create, I'd say, great things that need to happen. I'm always in, I'd say generally in favor of having support for those groups, matching, as it were, to try and meet these groups in their effort to try and make improvements. I'm curious if the Parks and Arts Commission as a group has been able to consider the project and its objectives. Any interaction with that group?
I did go ahead and present to it last Monday.
I'm curious about any feedback or observations, maybe, I think maybe Nancy's maybe gone, but perception and perception, I guess, with respect to the Parks and Arts Commission. Can you recount that maybe for what you remember?
It looked like it was well received.
It looked like the city was being considered to make commitments for the construction, I call it capital pieces. Sometimes I like to think through the capital pieces for durability, longevity, and I guess I'd say the expense portfolio, how that kind of lives in the long term. Can you describe some of that for, I think, some of the gazebo choices you're suggesting?
The gazebo choices would be a round gazebo. Something that's made of material that will uphold within the weather as well as community to make sure that it doesn't go away. We could either do something that is a Thomas Taj Mahal. Or we can do something a little bit more on the strategic part like we've got over at the other Rocky Hill Town Town Square and so forth. Which would probably be a little bit on the lower end. Or we can simply forget about the gazebo altogether and just do the pavers and picnic tables that are already funded. So it's
Thanks.
Sure.
So what I'm seeing is that we have donations totaling about $10,000.
Correct.
You're really truly matching that the city, it came up with 10,000 in the 2024 budget. You would be able to apply that probably not to the large gazebo, but to the picnic area covers into the pavers.
Correct. And the papers are already taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah. So it would be for the picnic covers.
Because the one cover you said was about $10,000. I'd support that.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Cargill?
Thanks very much. Wendy, I have four questions for you. One, so I think Tom just answered this. So it's it's basically the amount that you're looking for is 10.
If we were to match it, absolutely.
Okay. And then, so as far as the maintenance goes, per what Councilmember Dumb is talking about, would the city be in charge of the maintenance on on that? Or how how do you envision that working?
We've got the Lions Club that's always willing and able to go ahead and clean things up inside the city.
Okay, so they would.
Yeah, we would go ahead and do the cleanup portion of it.
And then is this something that we would need to put in the budget for next year? Or is it something with, given our large Indian Fund balance, could be done this year?
Won't be done this year, but definitely for 2025, we'd like to see it in the budget.
But we couldn't make, I mean, I I know it won't be done this year, but could the match be made this year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You're talking about for this budget for next year.
For 2023.
I'm talking about the budget.
You're talking about the budget, what's left over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess my final question is, if we do this, can we get naming rights for the could the city's name be on it?
Yes. Oh, can the city of Liberty Lake's name be on it?
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Per Tim.
Can I verify something based on that conversation? Are we?
We're a city.
We we're only talking about pavers and picnic area covers, right? Right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just wondering what we're going to put a name on, but yeah, okay.
The gazebo.
It depends on what type of gazebo.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
But what we're talking about is not include a gazebo. Am I missing that? Right? Unless we came up with $30,000. There you go.
But you're thinking that 10 would would not cover the gazebo, that that would just cover the picnic, the picnic covers?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And my hope is with the sale of naming rights on the pavers, the community can go ahead and help out.
Is there room for expansion down the road for a gazebo?
Depends on which way go. If we if we if we go with the picnic tables and pavers, and we've got three distinct areas, then no.
Okay.
If we go with altogether underneath the gazebo, that's where we're looking at.
Okay, I'll look for a motion in the future.
Okay, same here. Councilmember Salberg, and then I will see if Councilmember Spencer has any questions.
We do have Nancy here. Can you give us any more insight as to the direction that the Parks and Arts was going to point us on this project? Were you going to include it in your budget?
We really appreciated Wendy coming and giving the presentation. And I actually walked that area afterwards because I hadn't really seen the whole area. And it it has a lot of potential there. It is Wendy came after we have already set our 2024 budget. So it's not on that budget. But I think, you know, eventually, you know, developing out that area has, like I say, a lot of potential. But we didn't, we don't have it in our 2024 budget. We had already said it before she presented.
All right, Councilmember Spencer, I just want to give you a chance in case you had anything.
No, I I think the only thing, comment I would have there is, you know, depending on which direction people want to go, if if it's an either or, you know, as far as putting out the picnic tables or the gazebo, if if the appetite is to have the gazebo, then perhaps we kind of work on planning that out a little bit further before moving forward with the pavers and picnic tables.
All right.
More quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wendy, were you thinking that the gazebo in a, it was 20 by 20 is what you were talking about? All right.
Anywhere from, you know, 14 up to 20.
So is that similar size to the one what we have at at Town Square?
It is.
Is it?
I think we're looking at a 20 14 to 20.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how big that one is.
Seems to be a little bigger.
I think that's
It may be a little bigger.
Town Square.
Yeah.
In Town Square.
Yeah, Jen's not on, so I don't think we can find that out.
A question. Should you add a gazebo, would you need covers?
No, we wouldn't. That would take care of it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll look forward to a motion.
Well, and that it'll come back up during, during budget season unless there's something you guys want to do in 2023. All right. Thanks so much for the presentation, Wendy. Thanks. Okay, flip back over to my agenda here. All right, next we are up to general business. Mayor Pertem.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items 10, A, B, C, and D.
Second, yeah, second by councilmember Salberg. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor of approving general business consent agenda items A, B, C, and D, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, uh, we're good. We're right along. General business item 11A, make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign memorandum of understanding between the Liberty Lake Police Guild and the City of Liberty Lake regarding the use of a video security and recording system.
Second. I, I, second from councilmember Curtis. I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Mark for some explanation as to where we are.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So if you will recall back to the email, uh, last week when Kelsey distributed the, the budget, I'm, I'm sorry, the agenda packet, uh, there was a note in there that said that this item was in progress and we hope to have it ready by Tuesday. Um, and so we've been working diligently with, uh, the police guild to come to, uh, a common understanding so that we would have an actual agreement for you to um, authorize the mayor to sign. At this particular point, we have what I will call an agreement in principle, but we do not have a signed agreement that both the, the city and the guild has, uh, in, in writing. And so we expect for that to happen within the next couple of days. And so the conversation at this point is, are there conditions, I guess, under which you would approve the mayor to authorize this agreement? And we can talk about the essence of what's in there in a minute, but, um, that, that's where we are at this point. There is no MOU at this point to, to approve. However, um, where this originated is if you recall back in early May, council uh, approved the collective bargaining agreement between the guild and the city. Um, and in that agreement in Article 12, uh, Section D, there's a, a paragraph in there about, uh, body cameras and the reason that we use those and, uh, kind of some safeguards and protections and how they were used. And so what this MOU will do is amend that section to include some security cameras that have been installed in the police building, both internally in, inside the building and on the building's exterior that are pointed to, uh, publicly accessible areas. And so where we are at this point is that the agreement in principle is that we are going to exempt the cameras that are pointed at publicly accessible areas, uh, from the, um, prohibition of recording audio. In other words, the, the cameras that are inside the building pointed at employee areas or areas that are not publicly accessible will not be recording audio. Those that are on the perimeter of the building pointed and trained at areas that are publicly accessible to include the lobby of the building will have audio recorded at all times. And so that is in essence where we are with the agreement. We just don't have a document where we've both agreed to those terms, but that is forthcoming and we expect to have that in the next couple of days. So that's, that's where we stand. Happy to answer any question. I think Sean's available to answer any procedural questions as well.
And, and we've got, um, Sergeant.
Yes, and we've got a representative from the guild to ask as well.
Questions for him. But, Councilmember Salberg.
The essence of the working out the memorandum of understanding has to do with two-party consent in the state of Washington in your specific air, open area. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. I understand that.
Can you restate that?
We have a two-party consent in, in the state of Washington. You have to agree to be recorded.
I have to say it's okay.
Honestly, I'm just, I'm asking for the benefit of everybody listening.
Yeah, and so because we're a two-party consent, which is a pain, but which is protects also some speech, so. Understand. And there are exemptions with body cams and other things that I'm sure part of this.
Yeah. And, and Beth Canar, who's our, who's the attorney we've used in the past for our labor negotiations, has been helping with this. And she's unfortunately out of the office for, for a few days. So that's, we were really close to having it for you guys tonight, but it just didn't work out. And we didn't want to throw it in Sean's, Sean's lap at the last minute.
And I'll just add, Mayor, um, in essence, what's been proposed is no different than what's already in the collective bargaining agreement. Um, it's just applying these cameras based upon what's in the collective bargaining agreement that the council's already approved. Um, so there's not additional terms or things outside of what's there. It's to tie it back to what was already agreed upon by the parties.
I'd like to see the memorandum of understanding completed before we move on.
Uh, I have a question.
Yep.
Um, you, you, you said that the cameras in the, those specific areas within the building would not be turned on, basically.
The audio capability would not be turned on, yes.
Cause I was gonna ask, what's the purpose of the camera?
Yeah.
You could still.
The audio.
Just the audio. I missed that. Okay.
Right. So I guess the, the ask would be to, for the council to approve us signing the agreement, assuming there's no changes from what we're discussing here tonight.
To rephrase that, on condition that the final agreement includes the exemption of those cameras that are in areas that are trained on publicly accessible areas, which is the last piece that has to be put into and agreed on.
Audio only.
And, and those cases, it would be video and audio.
Wait a minute.
So the cameras.
The ones inside, except for the lobby are video and audio. The one in the lobby and it, and facing the public parking areas with video only, with the option of turning, sorry.
It's the other way.
My bad.
It's the other way around, other way around. So there, there were a group of about eight cameras that were installed. There are one, two, three, four of them that are in areas that are publicly accessible. Those four cameras, we would enable audio and video. The other four, we would only enable video.
But the, the PD could turn that, that audio on.
Under certain conditions, which have already been agreed to, um, they would be able to enact the audio.
So you're looking for us to approve that action without seeing it in writing, basically?
Yeah.
The text of the rest.
I mean, I hate to put it that way, but that's kind of what it is.
That's correct.
So, um, Sean, are both parties in agreement regarding the action at hand?
That's my understanding. I mean, I think Mark's had more conversations in the last day or two, but that's my understanding. So I'll let, I'll let Mark answer on behalf of the guild. I, the phrase I would use is, we have an agreement in principle on the terms up to and including the exemption of the cameras that I just mentioned, that, that text has to be added into the agreement.
Correct. We're super close.
Okay. Mark, does the guild, do you have any concerns other than the ones we've discussed?
No.
Today?
No, sir.
Do you anticipate there being any additions to the agreement? To the M-MO?
Nope, not on our end.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and we've had a couple face-to-face meetings. It's
Okay.
Work, work through it together, which is again, been nice.
Yeah, for sure.
Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and the guild regarding use of video recording systems.
Second.
Okay, so we already had a first.
I think we already had a first and second, maybe not?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so I think we're good.
That's okay. Always good to reiterate. All right, so there's no more, go ahead.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I don't have an issue with, with, what we're trying to do here. Um, uh, can you bring it back for official action by this body? Can you sign it and still bring it to us for?
That, that is an option that the council can, um, vote to have happen.
So we have it on the record. I guess we have it on the record now.
Yeah, we, we, we've done this on the rare occasion when there's some time sensitivity, we know, give, give pre-approval based on A, B, C, D, and E. Um, and if any of those fall out, then don't sign it. I know it's kind of a kind of a strange situation we're in. Go ahead. Is there some time sensitivity to this? Yeah.
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, we have about a six-month window where we fall out of our contractual guidelines for labor practices and takes away a lot of our bargaining power once we fall out of that six-week window, six-month window. And so since these were installed in May, we're toward the end of that.
Yeah.
I'm particularly interested in retaining the power of the guild to be able to bargain.
I don't think that's, yeah. Um, once you sign the document, can you send it out?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, you can see, but it's, absolutely.
It's, it's a very short document.
Yeah, it's, it's not even, it's probably a page.
One page and a quarter page.
Send it off to the council and give the time limit if you've got any copyrights of it. Speak out for your role.
And don't reply all.
And don't reply all.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Cargill?
We're good.
We're good.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. All right, so then I guess let's, uh.
You need me to make my part of the motion?
No, I mean, I think, I think it's understood from the standpoint of, once it comes to the final language, that it can be disseminated to the council.
All right. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, um, go ahead for vote those in favor of, um, where to go. It's my glasses. There it is, sign of, of authorizing there to sign memorandum of understanding um, between the police guild and Liberty Lake, Save Liberty Lake regarding use of video security and recording system, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right, we are up to council comments. Does anybody have anything bad? All right, not hearing any. Um, we have no public hearings or appeals, and we are up to resolutions.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment.
Absolutely. We'll go back to number 12. You know, you, you can't speak as a citizen, but we'll.
Yes, I can.
Well.
And I'm gonna.
You, you, but you can't remove your council hat, so you know.
Fellow citizens, staff, mayor, and city council. After much consideration and with strong feelings of regret pursuant to Title I, Chapter 10, Section 1-10-8 of our Code of Ethics, I do formally allege that councilmember Chris Cargill has violated our Code of Ethics and his oath of office. On June 6th, 2023, member Cargill pledged three commitments. One, until we have more oversight, I will not approve any executive branch appointments. Two, until we have more oversight, I will not approve any budget request that comes from the library. Three, until we have more oversight, I will be very skeptical of any proposal that comes from the executive branch. During the preface to these commitments, he stated that the library and the Board of Trustees is, and I quote, "a rogue department accountable to no one" and that the only recourse is to dismiss some of the library board members using a sledgehammer approach. Since June 6th, councilmember Cargill has made good on these commitments and on at least four occasions has voted not to confirm mayoral appointments to the Civil Service and Planning Commissions. The oath of office for Liberty Lake City Council member includes an oath to support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Washington and all local ordinances and to faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of the City of Liberty Lake according to the law and the best of our ability. Councilmember Cargill's actions have been personal, vindictive, and partial. They have evidenced a dereliction of duty to his oath and to the city and citizens of Liberty Lake. In these actions, he has directly challenged the executive branch and the municipal library to conform to his own views of transparency and oversight. It is important for context to note that none of the other three city council members who voted to change the ordinance and governance of the library have supported these actions. According to the enforcement procedures contained in the Code of Ethics, it is required that a hearing examiner make a preliminary investigation and determine if probable cause exists to support the alleged violations. Consequent to that, there are multiple options presented which may be followed. As a citizen and resident of the City of Liberty Lake, I formally and publicly submit this complaint on this date for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me get back to agenda and the other. Yeah.
You say resolutions are next.
Yes, yes. So no, no public hearings, resolutions. We are up to resolution 01-012C. Kelsey.
Resolution number 01-012C, resolution authorizing investment of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington monies in the local government investment pool.
Right. Um, Kyle, did you want to just give a brief freeze as to why we're doing this? It's really just a paperwork issue.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, we have a, uh, what we call a housekeeping resolution here. In the original resolution, we had city treasurer by name as the authorized individual and, uh, through subsequent conversations after we, uh, obviously know that, uh, that position is gonna be changing hands. Uh, the decision to update the res, uh, the resolution was essentially a formality. And I also recommend it including the finance director, if they have one, as well as the city administrator to have some redundancy in that position. So that is what you have before you tonight.
Okay. All right, do we have, uh, well, any questions? Comments from the council? All right, seeing that we are, uh, we have a resolution before us, I will open it up to any citizen comments on this, this resolution only at this time. If there's anybody here, just raise your hand. Anybody on chat? Send a note to our meeting host. Anything on your end, Jacob? Nope. All right, then we'll go ahead and, um, hearing no other questions, um, all in favor of approval, but sorry.
We need a, need a vote.
Sorry, thank you.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 01-012C.
Second.
I have a motion, the second by councilmember Cargill. Sorry about that getting ahead of myself. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. We have the next one, 23-251.
Resolution number 23-251, a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, approving the final plot of River District Town Center, First Edition, located in portions of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter and the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 9 Township 25N, Range 45EWM, Liberty Lake, Washington.
Lisa, is there anything you want to comment on this at all? All right, any? No, because they may have any questions for Lisa before I go to public comments. Nope, okay. Um, again, uh, since we have a resolution in front of us, we will take public comment if there is any. Is there anybody in council chambers? I don't see any, anybody online. All right, we'll go ahead and take a motion to, uh, for this resolution.
Uh, make motion to approve resolution number 23-251.
Hey, you have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Dunn. All those in favor of approving resolution 23-251, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero. Now, last one, 23-252.
Resolution number 23-252, a resolution supporting Spokane County ballot measure number one.
And I know you guys discussed this at the last meeting. Is there any follow-up? Councilmember Salberg.
I wasn't present at the last meeting and I appreciate the discussion that occurred and the information that we have in our voter's guide, but I cannot support, um, measure one as it stands. It's lack of specificity and a, a plan for the expenditures during the next 30 years of this $1.5 billion. I think needs to be much more specific before I'm gonna be, um, supporting it. It, it appears to me that, um, it's mixed with regard to the city um, of Spokane and the county commissioners as to support or not support. And, uh, I will not be supporting this measure.
Let's see, but anybody else? Uh, oh. Okay, not seeing any. Do we have a motion for 23-252? Oh, yeah, public comments. Anybody having? Any comments here in chambers? Anybody online? Okay.
Make motion to approve resolution number 23-252.
Second.
We have a second by councilmember Dunn. All those in favor of approving resolution 23-252, please say aye.
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 Any, any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes six one. Thank you very much. All right, um, no ordinances and for us tonight, no emergency ordinances. Um, no, okay, an introduction of upcoming agenda items. You guys have the list in front of you. Um, we have some upcoming budget, um, possible budget workshops. Um, we have tentative for the 24th, which I believe is next Tuesday. Um, Kyle, have we confirmed when binders will go out? I don't want to schedule anything before somebody has a good chance to go through everything.
Correct. So those will be, those will be delivered to council members' homes on Friday.
Given that knowledge, what's the what's the gut feeling of the the council on having a special budget workshop on the twenty-fourth? I'm seeing some some no's.
If we had to, but I don't know if that's not time with like.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Okay.
All right, so not no on the twenty-fourth. So then the next meeting is the eighth. It looks like we've got workshop at six. We could add, we already have on here budget, C S, budget and C F P review during the seven o'clock portion. Somehow we have two. We ended up with two things at six o'clock on the eighth. Seven, okay, got it. Okay, that makes sense. I know, Annie, I I sent you you and Mark some links on that. Do you think we'd be prepared to talk about that?
I don't know if I saw the link, so I would say no.
Okay, all right. Okay, so let's, if we can move Code of Ethics to the fourteenth, I'll resend that to you. It was an M R S C link, had tons, tons of examples.
Okay, I think I saw the email, but I don't know that I.
Okay. All right, we'll touch base tomorrow.
Fourteenth.
Oh, yeah, twenty-first, yes, sorry about that. And then we're looking again, is there any interest on having a special meeting on the fourteenth to go through the budget? Because this year we're looking at, obviously, what the org changes and things like that. We're looking at some special presentations about the org, the org change and how how that is shaping up and how that affects everything. I've asked for a present. Mark's going to do a presentation on the priority-based budgeting. Community engagement is probably going to do a short presentation on their ask, a couple of other things going through there. So if we could do one on the fourteenth, that would be great. I think we need the time, but that decision is yours.
I'd be good with the fourteenth.
In general, are we good with the fourteenth? Okay, great.
What time are you done?
Um, well, if we start at six, we can get out of here earlier.
Thank you.
That's okay with everybody. Maybe I'll order pizza and bring it in. We'll see. And then we've got November twenty-first, tentative, the annual code amendments. Lisa, are we still on track for the twenty-first for that? No, okay, well, you can get with Kelsey and update that date. TBD, we still have committees, commission appointment process. I know Mayor, we were asking about that. There's a couple, there's one that I want to put on there for twenty twenty-four. Given some of the proclamation requests that we've gotten this year is a discussion with the council on guidelines as to what and it's going to be in in interesting conversation. I don't want what what types of proclamations would we be willing to entertain versus not? And well, we can share some more. The Mayor Pretend was on an email for that earlier this week, so I just want to kind of maybe get some guidelines. So make some clear decisions on some of the requests that we get. I don't want to be cryptic, but I also don't want to offend anybody, so. So we'll add that to us for twenty twenty-four. Does anybody else have anything for the future agenda item, agenda?
Sean, you were, per our last meeting, you were looking at transparency language for the for the city as a whole, but county or for the council and the committees. Are we?
Yeah, so Mark and I and Kyle spoke last week and I know we're still, we're still working on it. So we're still planning it. But it's not by the wayside. So we had a conversation for a little while last week and so we're still working on it.
Great, thank you.
So Mayor, if I can back up to the social media item, Councilmember Kurtz and I had a conversation about that and I reviewed the information that you sent. And that conversation, which is labeled here at six and it should be at seven, I, in my mind, that's a ten-minute conversation. And I think that what we're going to do is make some recommendations there that the council will have to say yea or nay on. And so I, if we can keep that there, I think that'll help us move that item along in the future.
Because you guys are kind of spearheading it, if that's, you guys are in agreement, that works.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add for the future? Oh, we've got Lisa. Hold on.
So I misspoke earlier. Yes, there is a C F P or or the annual code amendment workshop that's going to be on the November. We're not going to be ready for hearings yet.
Right.
But I did want to make it clear that the that the what what was referenced as a workshop on November eighth at six P M is actually a hearing for a notice of violation. So I did want to make sure everyone knew that we were scheduling it at six o'clock to allow adequate time for the hearing.
Right, thank you. I didn't read that whole title. I appreciate the appreciate the correction. Okay.
Also, Mayor, Mark and I met about the commission appointment process. And I don't know, do we ever, do we ever decide that the transparency part of it would coalesce?
So I think what we were planning on and and I think part of the timeline that Sean was alluding to is is sometime in this calendar year, we want to resolve both of those things and they're going to intersect in some way. Yeah, but we want to make sure that both of those are resolved this year.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll keep that on the future list when the time comes and Sean's ready and get that on the agenda. Okay, all right, anything else? Oh, yes. I didn't, I wasn't seeing it on this end. Sorry about that, Councilmember Spencer.
No, no worries. So I don't have that sheet in front of me. So on the eighth at six is not a is not a budget workshop?
No, the eighth at six P M is a public hearing for the appeal of code violation. That's regarding the container fines that we levied on the Greenstone containers on in River District.
Okay, sounds good.
Great. Okay, all right, not hearing any others. We are back to citizen comments. So if there's anybody here in chambers once again, give me a yellow sheet and if there's anybody online, please send our meeting host a note and then he'll get my attention. All right, Mike Kennedy, back up.
Mike Kennedy is still a resident? Very unusual to have a speak twice in in one, but I really want to compliment everybody and when you bring in forward nine A Liberty Lake Lions Club Arboretum. Arboretum is is one of those incredible places in Liberty Lake that sometimes when people talk about, they'll go, well, where is that? And of course, it's it's right behind you. It's a stone's throw. If you have a really strong right arm, you can get it with one stone or or a golf ball, you'll pick up one over there. In two thousand and ten, our daughter passed away and when you have family members that pass away, you're always thinking, oh, there's some way that you could honor them, keep them near you or something like that. Lo and behold, one day we're walking through the arboretum and we happen to see a bench there that somebody had their name on. We said, well, that's kind of interesting. So I started doing some research and lo and behold that the city and their wisdom allows individuals to invest in park benches or something like that and either donate to the city, the city will maintain it after that. They can pay to have something inscribed on that. We did that in our daughter's name. And there's something that's tied us to the city for the rest of our entire life. Our son and our grandkids live just above where that bench is, so we have tremendous views looking at it. The bar arboretum is that I really, really support. Thank you for bringing this forward. To do some of that arboretum, which was donated by residents of Liberty Lake many years ago to put in a pavilion there, put in areas of picnic and things of that sort there. Some people may go through there and think, well, this is such a small area. I don't know if it really gets used that much. But because our son's home is there and we spent a lot of time there because they cook better than I do, I'm able to look down and see the traffic there. And that is a very busy, very small stretch of land. Because what's interesting is it's a natural corridor leading to a tremendous amount of homes south of City Hall and all of our commercial development here. It's right next to the golf course. You'll see a lot of people going back and forth on golf courts, golf carts with their golf bags going to and from there. I've actually seen individuals who will be over the golf course, come over with a lunch or something like that and spend some time there. On it. It's a fantastic opportunity that we have there. The great thing about citizens of Liberty Lake is that you talk to people, no matter where they live, and they go, I love Liberty Lake because of this, of this, of this, of this. All areas, we have areas that are really special to us. That's an area that maybe is not known as much, but it's special to a lot of people because of the corridor that it brings individuals, not in cars but walking. Carts, a lot of family, they'll be walking their dog or something like that there. So it it's just really a great place to be. I'm really excited that the city is going to look at this. I'm going to be a big supporter of that moving forward. And once again, thank you. It's not too often I get to get up here, almost get emotional on something that is so touching to so many people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, one last shout out. See if we have anybody online.
I guess.
Oh. Okay. Nicole, we will unmute you and you have three minutes. Hold on, we can't hear you yet. Hold on. We're working on it.
Oh, sorry, I'm putting kiddos to bed, but I tried to write my message in, but I'll try to share it with you guys now. So I just actually was hoping to get an update from the mayor on what the plans are regarding the safety around the parking lots between the elementary schools. I know I kind of briefly touched base with you one of the mornings this past week, but I would really encourage there to be a little bit more patrol in that area and also I would really also encourage no parking signs to be placed on the south side of Boone and the west side of the parking lot to prevent blind spots and inappropriate parking in the lot.
Okay, thank you. Normally, we we don't have a back and forth, but I can do a quick update before we go. So I, as you saw, I met Sergeant Brogan Reef out there last week and the first steps we're taking is to to put the west entrance as entrance only and the east and east driveway as exit only with a left turn and a right turn. Signs I believe are going to be in this week or next week. And we're still waiting on final determination if we will be able to do any painting this year or not because of the weather. So we're going to take those steps first and then there'll be some further discussions about no parking signs. The problem we run into with that is if we're going to put up the no parking signs, we need to be able to be have have the manpower to enforce that and actually tick it. So that's the next step. I will keep everybody apprised of the future progress. All right. Anybody else? All right, not seeing anyone. Double check the agenda. We do not have any executive sessions. So if there's no further business, we will go ahead and adjourn. All right, thanks, everybody.